Afternoon, good evening, everyone. Citizens Parkville staffers and city. We appreciate you being here for the City of Parkville Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting Tuesday, August thirteenth. We have a good bit of business on the agenda today. Some of it will go quickly, others might have some discussions, so I'm just gonna get to it. First order of business is the Indication Pledge and the Stability Pledge. Counselor Mack, if I would ask you to lead us in the indication. I would invite all of you in the audience to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. God, we come today to tell you thank you. Thank you for blessing us, Lord, this day. And we thank you for sustaining us through the storm that we didn't get hurt too bad. And Father, wherever they need help, we pray that you will send the help that they need. Now, Lord, as we come to do the business of the City of Hartsfield, we invite your holy presence into this room. We pray that you are creating us a clean heart and reneweth in us a right spirit, oh God. Let us be one Hartsfield. Let us be united. Let us be together so that this city can go forward and grow forward together. And Father, when you do all these things, before we ask you anything, we tell you thank you. We love you. We honor and praise you. In Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Have the pledge allegiance. Have the pledge allegiance to the good God. To the United States of America. And to the world. One nation, under God. In this one fairytale. I would also ask you to join us for the stability pledge. I pledge to build a stronger, more honest community. That I pay for sure engagement. Respect the other's good ones. And find a solution to the better ones. That brings us to our first somewhat order of business, the approval of minutes. I would enter. Excuse me. Yeah, yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. I don't think we've had a chance, not in a proper public meeting, to ask for a moment of silence to honor our former mayor, the honorable Michael Holt. So if you wouldn't mind, if you would join me in standing in just for a moment in reflection of his service to our city and how much we will, we miss him and how much we are also appreciative that we had him here in Hartsfield while he was with us. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I saw a few flowers in your office today. Is the big arrangement still in the lobby of City Hall? They wilted and stuff? Okay, well, yeah, Mrs. Holt sent a beautiful arrangement from Mayor Holt's service to us here at City Hall. And it was outside the lobby, but it was gorgeous and really nice to have it to remember it, so thank you for that, Mrs. Holt. And thank you too, Counselor Mack, for reminding me that we hadn't done that in a public meeting yet. But now, back to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the July ninth, twenty twenty four Regular City Council Meeting and the July twenty third Special City Council Meeting. I have a motion in second. Any discussion of the minutes? Any corrections? Hearing none. Welcome, Mayor Proton. We'll have a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July ninth to July twenty third, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes approved. That brings us right into our presentations. First on the list is the Tree City USA presentation. I would invite you to come forward. Would you maybe come to the microphone just so that, yeah, so the people on video can hear you? All right.
You can hold that there. And somebody, I know it's a long reach. Apologize for my fact view. Hartsfield has achieved its thirty eighth year as a tree city USA. City USA. We're gonna get a picture after all with all the city council and everybody together. Again, and I've started on this. My name is Ann Hyler. I'm an urban forestry specialist for the PD Region. I work for the South. You can sit. I just will get that. I'll get you standing later. So I am the urban forestry specialist for the PD Region. I am here to bring South Carolina Forestry Commission programs, their grants, their assistance to cities to assist them in managing their trees. Hartsfield has done this for thirty eight years. There are four requirements to be a tree city USA. Four requirements are, one, you need a public tree ordinance. If you think it's simple, it's not. There are many small communities without it. About eighty percent of the communities in the PD Region are less than five thousand people. We have Tatum, that's seventy five. So many of them, it's a mayor, city council members, and that's it. No town hall, no clerk, none of that. So it's quite difficult at times to get a public tree ordinance in on this. The second one is to have a tree board. And this is a tree board that is within the ordinance. So it's a city official tree board. Again, that is difficult. It's a voluntary organization. People have to show up four times a year, and they're there to assist city administrators with tree issues. So that's two. Third is to pay two dollars per capita on trees, which is surprisingly easy because tree care is very, very expensive. You buy a handful of chainsaws, et cetera, and you're almost there. Hartsfield has done that already. The fourth is simply to celebrate Arbor Day. So Hartsfield celebrated its Arbor Day December first. They planted three longleaf pines in Long Park. That was the street and grounds crew that did that. So this is what Hartsfield has done and continues to do to get people invested in the trees because trees are here to do work for the city. Unlike your sidewalks and your streets and your electric lights and your stop signs that need to be manufactured, need to be mined and pumped out of the ground, built, manufactured, shipped to you. Trees manufacture themselves, right? They build themselves the whole time. So, and they are here to provide work, and that is what the Forestry Commission, not only work in their public lands, but work in the city. So that is what we are here to do and all the municipalities is to assist them in managing their trees. And I'd like to do a shout out to Stephen Wild and Philip Bethay. I didn't mangle the last name on that. And Chastity Jones. They did work to get a grant from the Forestry Commission. They got a tree planting plan, which has been adapted to your downtown master plan. So they did a lot of work on that. So that, that grant will be coming from the Forestry Commission to you guys on all of that. So that's, that's some heavy lifting right there. Finding the brands is not easy. So I wanted to do a shout out for that. And with the Forestry Commission, we would like to get a photo of the city council members. You can come out. You forgot the two stickers. Get a picture. And the devil's smallest flag from the Arbor Day Foundation on them. Pretty much. So. Yeah, everybody, yeah, just grab a sign, grab a sticker. I know it's too late, but it didn't time. On it.
We got Paul.
Yes, that was it.
You guys all on Brian?
That is yours. Actually, I don't know who gets this, who wears it. But this includes essentially your receipt. You want something else? You can call and say, this is a receipt we got. There's lots of others. We can get bigger plots with real wood. So thank you all. And I want to let you know Hartsfield really is working hard on this. It is all cheating.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Oh, no, thank you.
I'll let you have us do this for the time being.
Thank you as well.
Um, still here. Y'all can stay up here. I'll just stay up here. Our first one. All right, this is Coker University Days. I think we have the PD Gavels here. Just see. Thank you for being here. I'll read the highlights of this proclamation. Whereas Coker College was founded in nineteen oh eight, again, in Coker University, July first, two thousand and nineteen. That seems like some way more recent. It was first founded as a Welsh high school in eighteen ninety four before becoming Coker College of London in nineteen oh eight and then becoming coated in sixty nine. The university is a student-focused bachelor's and master's degree-grading institution with a strong liberal arts core. And whereas Coker is playing and will continue to play a major role in Hartsfield's history. For many years, Coker was the only higher education option available in the PD area, even though there are other options available today. Coker carries on with its historical significance and enduring reputation. Whereas Coker University is an accurate reflection of its free offerings. As of today, Coker has five master's degree programs, creates bachelor's degrees in more than sixty subject areas. And offers four bachelor's degrees that can be earned entirely online. And whereas Coker University continues the institution's momentum, it's a nationally recognized leader in innovation related to teaching and learning and internationally recognized institution of higher education. And whereas Coker provides roughly a thousand students from twenty four states and twenty point different, twenty one different countries here in Hartsfield. And the City of Hartsfield with the quality higher education and increased job opportunities. Whereas showcase Hartsfield's support for Coker University students, faculty, staff, and our own commitment to becoming more college town than our typical, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield, who proudly hereby proclaim August sixteenth and nineteenth of this year as Coker University Days in the City of Hartsfield and encourage all of our citizens, you guys, to join us and celebrate in Coker University Day and to celebrate the return of Coker students to the City of Hartsfield. Awesome. It's my pleasure to present this. I think you had a bunch of your students out around town painting windows in the last few days or today? So painting the town in a little old weather.
We have three hundred new students that will start this fall in addition to our returning students. And so it's always very exciting.
Yeah, probably three hundred new Hartsfielders.
Three hundred new Hartsfielders. And this is Andy Lark, our president's student association. So the wonderful welcome.
So happy. Do you want to say anything? Will you just say anything, Paul? Yeah. Thank you so much for being here.
Mayor, we appreciate your support.
I bet that's what you say.
Thank you all.
This next one, I'll carry on. This is Fortuna, I bet you it's Fortuna. I thought nobody was here for this one. Do you have a hair going yet?
Good to see you this afternoon. Thank you. Whereas the Palmetto State is home to six commercial service airports, fifty four general aviation airports, and five busy military airfields that provide essential, essential support to South Carolina's diversified business base, increasing population and growing our tourism industry. And whereas airports assist, support and assist South Carolina in many ways, including recreational flying, providing a gateway to communities and tourist attractions, accommodating agricultural spring, supporting air cargo and air freight shipments, helping law enforcement, supporting the military in its operations, providing access in times of emergency and supporting medical needs of the medical professions. And whereas the Hartsfield Regional Airport sees close to twenty four thousand flights every year. It's home to a busy flight school that I believe has twelve students in training right now. And according to the twenty eighteen South Carolina Airport Economic Impact Report, supports a two point one million dollar economic benefit to our local economy each year. And whereas with over four hundred aerospace-related companies in the state, aviation is a multi-billion dollar industry. And along with commercial service airports, general aviation airports like our own, and military airfields, supports more than a hundred twenty two thousand jobs and contributes millions each year in tax benefits to state and local governments. The nation's aviation, aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield, do hereby proclaim this month, August twenty twenty four, as General Aviation Month in the City of Hartsfield and encourage our citizens to recognize general aviation for its significant contributions to our quality of life and economic growth and stability. So thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you for your service to the airport, to the City of Hartsfield. We appreciate you. Brandon, thank you as well for all that you do to support the Airport Commission. And it's my honor to present this to you. Give that to you. Absolutely, you want to say?
Well, what's going on at the airport?
I will say, I appreciate the declaration, the recognition for their Hartsfield Airport. Also, the city's continued support of aviation here. And on August the twenty fourth, twenty fourth, yes, we have a Wings Over Hartsfield event come out. There'll be food trucks, lots of different activities for families, children. We won't be flying kids around this time. It's not that event. But we plan to come if you can, if the weather's good, and I think you'll enjoy it. It'll be from ten till two on Saturday to the twenty fourth. Thank you.
Well, I didn't realize it had been moved because I missed the previous date, so I'm glad it got rescheduled. But thank you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Oh, we haven't gotten the picture yet. All right.
Thanks again to our guests. Yeah, I'll say again, we have twelve students in training at the airport right now, and there are five instructors. So what that tells me is that there is flexibility in scheduling. If you know anyone who is interesting, young or you're adult in learning to fly, then the Hartsfield Airport is the place to do it. That having been said, we will move right past the public comment session since we can have anyone sign up. And it is now your turn, Mr. Manager.
I don't have anything to say.
No way. Do you want to make anything up?
I don't.
Okay.
Well, we've had quite a, we've had quite a couple of weeks. We had the storm, and then my two children have been sick with fever, so I'm here tonight.
The storm after the storm.
Storm after a storm, so I'm here. We have enough agenda, things on the agenda already.
Well, we will, for the consent agenda, I will say again, thank you to our staff for preparing the reports to trying to keep us up to date on what's going on in the city. We really appreciate it. But that moves us into our business proper. Item number six, the public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty four seventy five. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title in presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's to amend and restate Chapter fifty eight Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Six, Minors, Division Two, Curfew of the City's Codes of Ordinances and Others Related Matters thereto. Again, for presentation, this is recommended by our police chief to move the curfew from twelve PM to eleven PM for minors, anything under eighteen. There's a whole system set up for if there's a first offense, we notify the parents. We were trying to get the kids to, if they're doing anything that's, doesn't need to be done after eleven o'clock, they need to go home. So we're just trying to control some things that are happening, especially at different parks.
Right. With that, thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. If you would like to speak on forty four seventy five, please go forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Hillary Rondo. My address is five thirteen West Home Avenue, Hartsfield. So before you vote on the curfew, I ask that you consider just a couple pieces of information. The Brookings Institute, I'm sure a lot of us are familiar with, has suggested that curfews do not work. The research suggests that curfews are ineffective with unintended consequences of racial profiling, strained relationships between police and teens. Two thousand and sixteen review by the Campbell Collaboration found that curfews have an actual increase on crime. The National Council on Crime and Delinquency says that curfew enforcement can funnel large numbers of non-delinquent youth into the criminal justice system. In an area where we already have some strained relationships between different areas of Hartsfield, the curfew could actually increase those strained relationships. And if you do an increased amount of research, you will find that curfews are usually ineffective. So that's just information for you to take as part of your work here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here and sharing, sharing with us. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak on, in the public hearing on forty four seventy five? All right, well, hearing none. I will close the public hearing on ordinance forty four seventy five. That brings us to the vote. I would entertain a motion to approve the public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty four seventy five.
Listen, Mayor, that's so moved.
Have a motion, have a motion in second. Is there any discussion on this?
Mayor, Chief Nellbro is back there. If we'd like to beg for him to, you know, express his opinion on that as well. And, you know, pros, cons, have a lot of.
I think, for the benefit of the public, that might be helpful, if you wouldn't mind. First of all, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Chief.
Glad to do it. So, as you know, we already have a curfew in place, and it has been in place for several years. We are just wanting really to move it back to eleven PM instead of midnight. And on top of that, we're wanting to make the notification of the parents more defined in the law. So we're gonna do a full written warning the first time that we find that this is the case with a child being out and the parent allowing them. And, and then we're also gonna do a full police report on it so that it's documented as to what was going on and why. So, so we will have a report as to why we actually went out with the child and how we notified the parents of that. We have not had any violation of the curfew law since I have been here. We have had some incidents in the parks where we've been concerned, and we've been able to approach these kids and at least advise them and their parents that, that they were out there and doing things that they weren't necessarily supposed to do. We've not put anybody in the judicial system because of this, either parents or children. And we don't, we don't really expect to. We just want to be able to have a little bit more footing between eleven and twelve where we think that younger children should not be out by themselves.
And Chief, this is a hundred percent foot traffic?
It is.
And Chief, that's written warning on the second occasion.
No, it's a written warning on the first occasion, and it's a full police report on the first occasion. Anything after the first occasion can, but obviously officers have discretion, can be charged, but not necessary.
Anything else for Chief Nellbro?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, yeah, appreciate your time. Any other comment from counsel before we vote? All right, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty four seventy five, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty four seventy five is approved. Moving on, item seven. Mr. Manager, if you would, publish forty four seventy six by title in the presentation for the record.
Yes, sir. It's to authorize the purchase of portion of property within tax parcel number zero three five one two zero one zero five three, located at seven fifteen Lindwood Place, Hartsfield, South Carolina, two nine five five zero, consisting of zero point three six plus or minus acres. To present, this is part of our skip South Carolina Infrastructure Improvement Plan purchase for a new lift station. We again will be looking at this and also a potential requirement of property for a water tank for the line for our water system.
A public hearing. I will now open the public hearing for ordinance forty four seventy six. If you'd like to come speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing for forty four seventy six. Public hearing is now closed. I would entertain a motion to approve, approve the final reading of ordinance forty four seventy six. Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Daniel, is that at the bottom of Dogwood?
Yes, sir.
Now, when you hit the tee, left, right?
Left.
Left, towards the creek.
Towards the creek, I believe. Right, Phil?
And it will be behind the house on the left.
It's a little, little patch of woods.
The owner has agreed to purchase it for the purchase price of six thousand dollars.
We, Daniel and I, he showed it to me. It's just a little patch of brush and, and trees, so we're not really.
And we came up with the price. The appraisal process, they come up with the price.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else in counsel before we vote? All, okay. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty four seventy six, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty four seventy six is approved. Can we get you a new microphone? Should we take a recess? Do you have some spares?
Anything but my thoughts.
And it works.
Okay, it says full battery for now. Um, okay, that brings us to item eight. The public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty four seventy seven. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title in presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to amending the City of Hartsfield Code of Ordinances by amending Appendix A Zoning Article Seven, Signs and Advertising Devices, Section Five, residential and agricultural zoning districts permitted signs. To present, this has been an ongoing topic from the Planning Commission. The recommendation before you tonight is to clean up some language about where self-illuminated or inlet illuminated signs are allowed within different zoning districts. The language here, we cleaned that up to be more consistent with the rest of the language with the no ordinance.
Thank you, sir. I will open the public hearing on item eight, the ordinance forty four seventy seven. If you'd like to speak on forty four seventy seven, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing of ordinance forty four seventy seven. Brings us to the approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty four seventy seven.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
And for the record, Mayor, I just want to let you know, we do have a letter from Mount Olive Word of Life Church from Pastor Chris Frazier that he issued in front of you discussing some items in it, in front of you.
And thank you, Madam Clerk, for providing that for all of us from Pastor Frazier. Would we have any, any comment on this before we take a vote?
What was the decision on that, Dan?
So the, again, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but the request came in as to allow an inlet, inlet sign on Sixth Street. And then also another request came in on Fifth Street and then also on Washington Street. And so the ordinance itself reads that only inlet signs are allowed within the B three district and the PD zones, which is our Walmart district, which is a planned development. The ordinance, the Planning Commission chose not to take that action forward, to recommend then have that going forward. So what all they did is to clear up the language before you tonight is to just make sure it's consistent across the word. You still can discuss as future date whether or not you want to change this ordinance or not.
Right, and I'll, yeah, we have the motion on the table. That's an important point. This is about clarifying the language. It doesn't actually change the rules. When we go through the process of reviewing our codes as part of the master plan throughout the rest of the year, that will be the opportunity when we can look at our codes and try to make substantive changes. This does not make a substantive change. It's just making it more consistent and clear with the, within the ordinances that we have. Would be my understanding of what ordinance forty four seventy seven.
That's correct.
He just sent it this morning, so it probably hasn't made it to the Planning Commission.
The letter came to City Council. It came with two members of City Council. I believe there was a attempt for a third, but there was a misspelling. But that's for City Council to have. Playing Commission has already made their recommendation as far as just clean up language. They chose not to take any action on the actual recommendation for inlet signs.
Anything else before we vote? All right, well, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty four seventy seven, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two and, two and three? Okay, well, the ayes have it. Ordinance forty four seventy seven is approved. Just want to make sure. Um just want to make sure, uh, well, I know I can't do math, but that's why I wanted to double check.
Two and four.
Two and four, okay, thank you. See, I told you. Item nine, uh public hearing and final reading of forty-four seventy-eight. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's approval to lease a portion of alleyway at one twenty South Fifth Street from Trust Company. Again, this is access for a police department and behind the former Hoofen Hill parking lot.
Yeah. Um I will open the public hearing for ordinance forty-four seventy-eight. Public hearing is now open. If you would like to come speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Haley, did you want to speak? I'm just kidding. Well, hearing none, uh we'll close the public hearing on ordinance forty-four seventy-eight. Um I would now entertain a motion uh to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four seventy-eight.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Just another renewal, same old, same old. Um we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four seventy-eight, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty-four seventy-eight is approved. Uh last item of unfinished business, public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four seventy-nine. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to amend the Hartsville City Zoning Code, Appendix A zoning Article three, definition of terms using this ordinance by adding a term, short-term rental. Again, this was a long, another conversation from the planning commission, and this is just to identify short-term rentals in our ordinance for future conversations about short-term rentals and any regulations we choose or choose not to do.
Right, exactly. It it adds a definition, but not regulation at this point. Um I'll open the uh public hearing on ordinance forty-four seventy-nine. Public hearing is now open. If you'd like to speak on forty-four seventy-nine, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. And hearing none, public hearing on forty-four seventy-nine is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the uh final reading of ordinance forty-four seventy-nine. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? You're way down there by yourself, Miss Matt.
It's okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, I I want to make note that when we look at this again, when we're actually looking at it to implement it, that codes enforcement is very, very involved and knowledgeable as to what needs to happen here.
Like this is the current situation.
Yes. Um because we've had some bad things happen with rental properties, and I just don't want that to happen again, and we need to know, like, right now, we've been told that we have people that are doing rentals for less than thirty days. So I just want to make that clear, that codes enforcement is heavily involved in this, and we understand each other as to what needs to happen.
Fair enough, thank you. Any other comment from council? Before we take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four seventy-nine, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty-four seventy-nine is approved. Moving on to new business, Resolution eight twenty-four oh one. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's approval for Hartsville Police Department, H P D, to enter into an agreement with Rubicon Family Counseling Services for alcohol enforcement team services. To present, uh the Rubicon Family Counseling Services actually received a grant from the federal government, and so they are asking us to partner with us to help uh enforce underage drinking laws, et cetera, and deal with prevention and risk of efforts to reduce that risk.
Um I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution oh eight twenty-four oh one.
It is.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Just for the uh, for the record, I guess, this is a renewal of a longstanding agreement, I believe, isn't it?
This actually might be a new one.
It might be, is it a new one?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's still um should be helpful for both H P D and for uh our constituents.
Hold that thought for next year.
For next year, getting access to services they need. Any other comment besides my uh my incorrect self? Well, hearing none, um all those in favor of approving Resolution oh eight twenty-four zero one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Mr. Manager, if you would publish eight twenty-four oh two for the record?
Yes, sir. It's approval for transfer of cemetery revenue to perpetual care investment trust fund. Present, this is a annual renewal that we do every year. Uh this is just for Magnolia Cemetery and Greenland Cemetery to uh have determine ten percent of the annual sales of the care going of this burials go into perpetual care fund.
Okay. Um I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution oh eight twenty-four zero two.
Second.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion on this one? Clarifications?
Mr. Mayor, um Daniel, that was three thousand.
Three thousand four hundred and one dollars, yes, ma'am.
All right.
Anything else before we vote? All those in favor of approving Resolution oh eight twenty-four zero two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution passes. Uh item thirteen, not quite the last one, Resolution eight twenty-four three. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title for the uh presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. Approval of consulting firm for Brownfield's Environment Consulting Services. To present, this is a, um again, this is an exciting process for us. Uh we put these, this project out for bid. Again, we we received a FEMA grant for Brownfield's assessment grant. Uh we're very excited about receiving this half a million dollars towards identifying potential Brownfield sites throughout the city. Uh that then makes us eligible for future grant opportunities and cleanup opportunities across the entire city. Uh we had some ideas of where there might some, might be, but we're going to be going through the application process. To start, though, we had to actually hire a firm to work with us hand in hand to make this process uh happen. Uh we received four um very qualified bids. We did choose to go with P P M Consultants, who was um very instrumental in helping us understand the process, uh despite they are the highest bidder, but this is completely grant funded uh by the federal government, so there's zero money out of the city budget for this process. And again, I think that they are the most knowledgeable. They assisted at Butler Heritage Community Foundation with uh their Brownfield Assessment Grant, and they're very familiar with the area, so we're very excited to work alongside of them if you guys so choose.
Cool. Um, thank you, sir. I would entertain a motion to approve as a resolution zero eight twenty-four zero three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this resolution? Any questions?
Daniel.
Ma'am.
Um, do you have any idea where we'll start our projects?
Yes, um so several different areas. I mean, anywhere that we know there might be some contaminants. So for instance, along the uh Railroad Avenue, there was arsenic areas uh near Sunoco. There's issues with uh the chemical plant that burned down, uh any type of issues with um air quality from uh different types of manufacturing going on in the area. Uh any type of issues that might be an impediment to development that would cost developer money, we could potentially assess and then pay for uh receive grant funding to pay for, to take care of those things, so the uh burden is not on the developer to do it. This opens up a slew of opportunity, uh a windfall of opportunity for developers coming in that might have that final burden to deal with asbestos abatement, with gas and uh, you know, contaminants in the ground abatement, uh any type of issues that might just be that final thing that just doesn't make sense. Uh two very um prominent locations in town have potential contaminants on site. The old Thornwell School uh has issues that could be remediated through this grant process, completely paid for by the federal government to then make sure that we can invest in the community for our citizens.
Just wanted to make mention that there's a gas station on Sixth Street, and there was also a dry cleaner.
Yes, ma'am. Uh any, any type of issue, so when we actually went through the process, we thought we'd have to um work with the county and another entity to make sure that we had uh ample um sites available.
Yes.
But by just looking at what we do, and again, another shout out, I know the uh Forestry Commission is gone, but Chastity Jenkins and uh Philip Bethay were instrumental in writing this grant. When we looked at the entire opportunities we had here and what they were able to provide for the um, to the E P A, we had enough on our own to go forward by ourselves. So we were sole applicant. Um this was extremely competitive process. I think there were only, I don't have the numbers in front of me. If you look at our press release, you'll be very excited about the numbers, but um uh we were chosen, it was extremely competitive. I believe only like ten percent or twenty percent were chosen across the country. And so this is our first year applying, and it's our first time doing it, and we got it.
And we were very fortunate in that because the um Butler Heritage Foundation, I think it took them like three times.
It took them three times, and um and the same group worked with them as well.
Right.
And so they were very uh informative, very helpful, and I was very excited to meet them and and get to talk to them.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else before we vote? Well, uh all those in favor of approving Resolution zero eight twenty-four zero three, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution eight twenty-four three is approved. Our last item of business, Resolution eight twenty-four oh four. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's approval of bid awards for the City Hall Emergency Operations Center Generator, Center Generator. And uh to present, this is a long, longstanding uh grant application working with the FEMA grant. I believe when I first started, four years ago, uh there was rumors and myths about our generator was coming to City Hall from the uh federal government. Um it took a lot of dedication by um Jeff Burr, um Fire Department Chief, uh working to try and get this grant up uh approved. And finally, we were able to get this uh so City Hall be online in event of a storm. Um it is uh exciting to have another opportunity for redundancy in event of something happening. You never know.
Again, not as clean of a process as the Brownfield grant.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Even though Brownfields are quite dirty.
Yeah. Um. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution zero eight twenty-four zero four.
It is so moved.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this resolution before we vote? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution eight twenty-four oh four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution, resol, I cannot, Resolution eight twenty-four oh four has been approved. Um for calendars and other items, I would be remiss if I did not mention that our city of Hartswell Master Plan Planning Process Survey is now open. We have copies of this little flyer up front. Um there's a Q R code you can scan with your phone. There's U R L you can type in to your laptop. If you're not into using technology, or if you know someone who is not uh as tech savvy as we might be, that would prefer a paper copy, we have a stack of them, and we would encourage you to take a few and distribute them to people you know that would prefer to have a paper copy. Um they can deliver them back here to City Hall at their convenience, and we will make sure that their uh their responses are digitized and codified along with the rest of them from the, from the digital survey. So whichever one is your preference, please take some and hand them out um to your friends, family, and uh and neighbors.
Um and that grant will be available to August twenty, the end of the month, I believe, August twenty-ninth, I think, close to it.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine, there we go. Anything else for the good of the club?
Center Theater, Open House.
Thursday at five thirty? Five thirty-seven, right, thank you. Center Theater, Open House is open to the public, five thirty to seven. Um you can check out what they've been up to. Uh hearing, nothing else, uh no, hearing no objection. We now stand adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.